Okay, how are we doing now? Coming from somewhere, I can't tell, it's more to my right here. Is that microphone on that you just sat down?
No.
Okay. Yeah, there's still a pretty good echo from somewhere over there.
It's, I'm getting it very quiet on my machine, but it's not.
Okay, how about now? Are you still hearing it? Testing one, two, three?
The echo seems to be gone.
Yeah. Okay, now, how are we doing?
Seems like no echo.
Yeah, I think we're as good as we're gonna get.
And then the problem is they're not gonna be hearing you guys if they're disconnected from their audio.
Let's see, what can we try here? I think if we all mute while public comment person is talking, but keep our volume up, shouldn't we be able to hear them? As long as we're all muted. And the same thing when TC wants to say something, we're gonna have to figure out how to hear him.
Can have him raise his hand.
Yeah. Say something in the chat. Okay. So anybody who's listening in, watching in or watching the recording of this later, will notice that we've had some technical challenges and we're gonna try to proceed and not sure how smoothly this is gonna go, but we'll give it a try. So I think because of the technical challenges, we missed non-agenda public comments, so we're gonna go back and attempt to do non-agenda public comment. So Julian, let's promote somebody and then I'll mute myself here and if everybody in the room would mute themselves, let's see if we can hear a public comment.
Ms. Victor, you are about to be promoted to panelist.
Hello, this is Mary Victor. Are you able to hear me? All right. I, Mary, I'm Mary Victor. I've lived in Sammamish 22 years. And for non-agenda public comment, I did send in a one-page sheet that is from Sammamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. They had had a fall retreat where they talked about aspirations and kind of the things that they wanted to have so that they can go forward with their focus and implementation plan. I thought they did a community vision portion, which although it's not something maybe Sammamish Plateau can do by itself, all of the Board of Commissioners, which there's five of them, they are required to live in the district area and I think they actually all live within the city of Sammamish itself. SPW serves about a quarter of Isicawha, it serves some unincorporated King County up to the northeast of Sammamish and then most of Sammamish, the other portion is served by Northeast Sammamish Sewer and Water District, which is much smaller. So anyway, I just, I wanted to send it in because they talked about the need for workforce housing and for affordability. And I can tell you in attending their meetings since about 2015 as well. Couple of years ago, they did a study, they showed where everybody lived, they did radius and and circles about where they live, where they commute from. And it was very clear that they are having challenges, having their people live in this city. And then when COVID happened, there were other things. And then more recently, they've, they've been trying to hire people for positions because a lot of their very long-term people are retiring. And so they're having to backfill those and train them and they're finding that people, they, they come and then if it's too far to drive, they just, they don't stick with the program anymore, even if they're really good fit and even if they're trained well. So water and sewer services are something that you want to work pretty much all the time. You don't want them turned off. If there's emergencies, there's an earthquake zone down in Isicawha, all of our sewage goes that way. So if that doesn't work, you want those people available. And if there's a water main break, I think you've seen some of those in the news this year. It takes out 12 or 15 houses or something that just don't have water. So you do want fire department, police department people, you want water and service district people to live and work in the city if they can. So workforce housing is particularly important. And on the affordability, you go by the percents and what they make. By the way, what Lake Washington School District teachers make, what the fire departments, what the police make, all those is public information, just like in the city budget packets, you can see not specifically what each person makes, but what like a management analyst would make. So those information are available. So the last thing I want to talk about is there was a comment about why don't we do wider surveys? It is my understanding that the statistically significant surveys give you a good enough result that you don't need to spend more money or go wider or try to get from 15,000 people. So we just need to publicize to get wider engagement for the community and we need to do those statistically valid. And then I think you've got the input that you need. So I spoke to my comment and I hope that you will read it at some point. It's very very good information from the water district and I'm just sharing it so that you guys can see. Thank you. And I'm muting.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney here. I chatted with the city council on Tuesday and I'm gonna share the same information with you guys. There's been a lot of written, public facing documents that have used words like overdevelopment, rapid growth, rampant growth, et cetera. I would agree that before 2005, that was maybe appropriate, but since 2006, it has not. And my comment is to set facts about some numbers. And here we go. Sammamish has roughly 22,500 housing units. About 19,000 of those were enabled and allowed by King County. And about 3,500 enabled and allowed by the city of Sammamish. That's about 85% King County and 15% our city. But let's talk about when those were built. Roughly 3,000 were built before 1980. 13,000 were built from 1980 through 1999. And 6,500 were built from 2000 to 2022. Of the 6,500 built since 2000, about 3,000 were allowed by King County in the pipeline at incorporation. And about 3,500 allowed by Sammamish. And it's important to recall that we had a development moratorium from 1999 to 2005 as far as our new house permitting went. Let's talk about some average homes per year. For the 20 years from 1980 through 1999, there were approximately 650 homes built a year on average. That's, that's a lot. From 2000 to 2005, the King County pipeline homes of roughly 3,000 were built out at an average pace of 500 homes a year. Significant. From 2006 through 2022 for 17 years, the 3,500 homes our city has allowed is about 205 homes a year. So I would say that our community isn't overdeveloped. It's very much misdeveloped. With 85% of the households built by King County without planning for what our geography is gonna be, I believe we have significant oversupplies of some types of housing and undersupplies of others. And it's time to rectify, add different diverse smaller housing units for all income levels. Mark those words, that is critical for all income levels. And there's a way to do so that will have net positive growth with very little downside. More on that coming, but I just wanted to share the facts of the pace of growth so we can level set on that and then have different ideologies on what we think is best. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Okay, Julian, do we have any more public comment? All right, I think I'm back on the audio here, I hope. So let's, uh, let's move on to our main topic once again for this evening, which is a discussion about the first, one of the first key steps in our comp plan update, and that is formulating and finalizing our community vision statement. So Evan, if you want to start again, let's try this one more time.
Sure, sounds great. It's a great introduction to the topic, Mark. Thank you. Good evening, planning commission and folks joining us online. Tonight, we will be going through some exercises to help generate ideas around the community vision statement for the comprehensive plan update. Jeff Orango, our lead consultant for the comp plan update will be guiding us through that and I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Jeff.
Great, thank you Evan. Good evening commissioners and those attending from the public. Again, my name is Jeff Orango, planner with Framework and project manager for our consulting team on the complent update. And tonight we're here really to hear from the commission about what they would like to see in terms of the vision statement. This is a follow-on meeting from a couple of months ago. We had a joint meeting with the city council, the planning commission, where we talked a bit about visioning and showed some examples. And so we kind of want to build from that discussion. We put together a Miro board, which can help us capture ideas and we have some background information and I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Okay, so you should be able to see the Miro board. For those of you not familiar with Miro, it's an online tool for kind of brainstorming and doing workshops, both online and in person in a way to collect feedback visually. Let me just orient you to some of the things that are on the board. A lot of this is the materials that were presented at that joint meeting of the city council and planning commission. So it's just background information in case we need to refer to it. We have things like the existing vision statement, the vision statement, the draft vision statement that came out of the community visioning project that wrapped up earlier this year. A summary of the community priorities that came out of the community visioning project, including the statistically valid survey. Some examples from other communities of visions that we had presented again at the previous meeting. I will go over them tonight, but we can refer back to them. We also included on the board, the vision and mission statement for the Department of Community Development in Sammamish, just as sort of a way of providing an example of sort of a core short vision statement, a mission statement, and then some additional explanation or specifics at the bottom of that. And then kind of the main focus of the board are a couple of exercises we want to walk through and collect feedback. And again, the primary purpose is really to hear from the commissioners and the public this evening. So with that, we can kind of launch into the first question, but before I do that, are there any questions or comments from the commission? Before we kind of dive in? Not hearing any. So this first sort of exercise deals with the key themes. And as you all know, there's been lots of discussion around visioning. There was a whole project devoted it early this year. So we don't want to start from square one. We want to build from the input that's already been provided. And again, as part of that community vision project, the outcome was some community priorities and those are summarized in the blue sticky notes up top. And so we just want to hear from the commissioners if there are other key themes that perhaps are not embodied in these examples here. Or if we might want to fine tune how, how some of these elements are combined. But I'll just walk through them real quick and then we can open it up for comments. So the themes that were identified in the community vision project, diverse, safe, inclusive and walkable. Connection to the natural environment, which is a very strong theme in the existing conference and plan and something we certainly want to carry forward. Also connects to the climate action plan, which is currently under, under development. Options to walk, drive, bike and take transit. So the sort of mobility element. Tight-knit character, services, cultural events and retail amenities. So this connects to sort of the mixed-use centers. And that was one of our planning summit topics in November as well. And we did get some feedback on that. Resilient infrastructure and social networks. And then finally, housing variety, choice and affordability. So be interested in thoughts from the commissioners. If there's any themes you think are missing or any fine tuning of these existing themes that we would want to carry forward in some fashion in the vision statement and supporting information.
All right, anyone want to comment at this point? And Julian, if you can help keep track of TC, if he raises his hand. Josh?
I am curious if you can help define what you mean by themes and how we should think of that word usage as it relates to the vision statement.
Yeah, I think it's, it's themes, it's kind of the elements or the it's sort of communicating what's important to the community in the planning period. So that's essentially what it is. If you were to articulate, what are the most important things you want to communicate for the community to achieve or maintain or preserve over the next 20 years, what would those be? So some of these things are characteristics of the existing community. Some are more aspirational and I think it's okay to sort of intermix those two. Because we want to preserve what we love about Sammamish and we want to achieve the things that, you know, we feel might be missing. So that, that's kind of what I mean by themes. It's just sort of what the community cares most about. What are the priorities that we want to communicate through the vision statement? And eventually into the actual, you know, plan itself.
Okay, thank you. I would just note right now that, that I think the only thing I'm gonna comment on is that walkable and in the first one and the third one is there twice. So it can probably might be able to be removed from that first one since we covered in the third item.
Yeah, we had brought that had come up previously again. Like I think maybe the thought that you're having is it, it maybe doesn't marry that well with the other items in the first block and it is addressed in the other one. So I think that's a, that's a good comment. And I'll just make it down here.
John, go ahead.
Correct. Yeah, that makes sense.
Carrie, go ahead.
Just unmute yourself.
Testing. Okay. Forgive me, I, I'm a little confused by this. I appreciate the exercise, but I am confused. Just jumping right into this because we have a draft vision statement and some of this is in there. And some of it's like mixed up. I think like something, some things are combined here that are in different sentences here. So just want to step back and figure out what exactly we're doing here.
Yeah. So, so both the community priority statements, which are summarized in the lighter blue stickies and the draft vision statement came out of the same project. And I, my understanding is there was a feeling like there was more work to be done to develop the vision statement beyond the draft that was developed. So that's, that's exactly what this exercise is for, is to kind of reconcile those two and come up with something that I think includes elements of both, but maybe is, is not exactly as the current draft has been created. So if there are things in the vision statement that you think are, should be reflected here or vice versa, then that would be what we would want to hear. And then we'll come back. You know, the first part of next year to actually have a draft that we can talk through with you and, and get your feedback and make refinements to.
Okay, thank you. Then, then I would add something to the effect of sustainability. I think, oh, you know, from prepared comments that I was going to bring tonight. I was gonna suggest like the top sentence of the vision be a little more have a wow factor. And so doing something like sustainability and then tying all the things we want to that to see in the community, to tie back to sustainability as it relates to climate or other things that we care about the natural resources.
Yeah. I think that's fair. I mean, at the, at the last meeting we had with the planning commission and the council together, I mean, we offered some of our thoughts around some of the themes that we thought might be missing or not as strongly. And I, I think sustainability and climate is, is probably one of those. I mean, the only one here is really, I mean, it talks about resiliency. But it's the connection to the natural environment, which certainly is part of that, but it's not quite the exact same thing. So I definitely see that as something that could be more prominent, given that the climate change element is a new piece of the plan, as is the economic development element of the plan. And I think it's, it's also important to, to think about the vision statement, not just as a vision for like the city as a whole, but really specific to the comp plan and what that comp plan addresses in, in sort of its purpose. So it's a good one.
Okay. Yeah, I like it, Carrie. I found that this sort of took a step back from the draft vision statements. I was a little bit confused as I was looking through those. But to comment on the themes that are here, diverse and inclusive, I think is separate from the safe and we've already touched on the walkable. And then there's the theme about, you kind of covered it with what you're doing. But about the tight-knit community and I liked in the draft statements, there was a piece about, you know, diverse in culture, but there was also a piece that related to, you know, kind of strengthening the social network, meaning the connections among people. And I found that combining those two could be pretty powerful so that we welcome a diverse culture, welcome diverse cultures in backgrounds while supporting robust social cohesion and engagement. And I'm not sure if that first box, the diverse, safe, inclusive and walkable was meant to capture some of that.
Yeah.
But it seems like that would be a nice place to put that in terms of a theme that we want diversity. But diversity can also be enhanced with like cultural cohesiveness that brings us as, as part of a community.
Yep. Makes sense. And just to clarify, the, the, the the statements you see in the blood, in the blue are again, came out of that project. They're not meant to replace the draft vision statement. They're simply here just for context for us to have this discussion. Because these are some of the, some of the specifics that came out of that project. But again, we, we can certainly deviate and add from that and we'll certainly be looking back at the draft vision as well and taking ideas from that as well.
Okay, can we check with TC and see if he wants to comment here? Okay, I and he can have nothing. Okay. I had three things to suggest.
Thanks.
The first one is, and a couple of these are more concepts. And I just had some words that maybe relate to that. The first one is some words I wrote down, quiet, peaceful, tranquil. I think that the bucolic word comes to mind, nature of the city is something that people love. Safe is kind of going in that direction, but you can have a safe community that's not right, you know, the kind of peaceful, quiet neighborhoods that we have. So I think that somehow we need to recognize that people like that. The second one, I, I agree on the services amenities. However, the way I said it was, I think that if it's a vision statement, then the vision should be that our community provides the opportunity for citizens and businesses to thrive. Or something like that, right? I mean, that's kind of what we, and actually I wrote local businesses. I think that's part of what we want to plan for is a way to make the people that are here and the businesses that contribute to those amenities be able to succeed. And there are a lot of things we can do around that. And then my third one is really just a kind of a comment on resilient infrastructure. The thing that makes me pause there is that resilient doesn't really say anything about adequacy or keeping up with the the community's needs. You know, an internet that operates at 100 megabytes or whatever, but you know, it can last forever, but that's not what we need, right? We need something. We need stuff that actually roads, sewers, water services, everything like that. We need, that can keep up with the community's needs, not just that it lasts forever. So I think that's a slightly different take on it.
Yeah, I agree. I think that was one that we had identified as well.
That's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
About the infrastructure, I, I play with that a little bit. And I thought like efficient, effective. And part of what I was thinking is as a resident here, I should feel like my tax dollars are going a long way. And providing good transportation, good parks, all of those. I'm getting good value for my tax dollars. And I don't know if the vision statement should say, we love paying taxes because we get our value for it. Because nobody would agree with that. But, but something about that, you know, the effectiveness or efficiency of the infrastructure that that holds this community together.
Yeah, I mean, later in the, you know, at first we identify the needs and then later in the process, we are going to be figuring out how to pay for it. So it gets, you know, and there's always a gap. So so I think it gets to the trade-offs of, you know, taxes versus services, but, but your point's a good one in terms of making the most efficient use of the dollars we have to meet the, to meet the needs.
Josh, did you want to add something?
I, I kind of want to piggyback on what Commissioner Briscoe said and, and I'm curious if talking about a sustainable budget or sustainable tax revenue source is an appropriate thing to have in this portion of it because we can't do any of this without that. And that's one of the challenges Sammamish has is we've got essentially a singular source of tax revenue. So is part of our vision to diversify that tax revenue? And if so, does that belong in this section here?
It absolutely could be. And I think it's, it's definitely something to include in the themes. I mean, whether and how it gets into a vision statement, we'll worry about that later. But I think it's definitely a theme both in terms of just the fiscal operations of the city, but also economic development, right? I mean, economic development can be jobs and things like that, but it's also revenue for the city, you know, and that's why you know, many cities that we work with, you know, put a lot of emphasis on commercial and non-residential because it's typically viewed as a way to pay the bills and, and right now in Sammamish, there's limited areas to do that. And, and we don't know if that will change or not, but, but it's definitely something to, to be part of the discussion for sure. Yeah.
Can everyone up there hear? Can you hear what I'm hearing? Because if my one option is I could move that table closer to you guys, maybe Jeff, then I can move up there. Cause if my one option is I could move that table closer to you guys, maybe Jeff, then I can move up there. And if, if people can hear, that's fine. Okay, continue as is.
Okay, any other thoughts? And we can certainly come back, you know, if there's, have a thought later, we can move around the mural board and come back. It's not. Uh, we don't have to be done with it. We can even offer this mural board to the commissioners afterwards and have you put your own comment in. You know, or, or even look at it. So it's a very flexible tool. Um, we'd be happy to do that. So that this, uh, so the exercise is supposed to kind of build. So we have some themes, um. And we could even add in some of the themes that you just, uh, mentioned here, but the, now we're trying to kind of connect the themes to like. What are some of the big ideas that might actually make some of these things happen? The next exercise gets more specific into implementation, but like. Okay, if we wanna be diverse, safe and inclusive, you know, what would we wanna include potentially in the plan to be able to do that? Um, so it's, it's, it's meant to sort of build on those themes, but get a little bit more specific. Um, and again, we can pull in some of the things you mentioned. So if you have one specific to that, I'll just pull it over to the board. And we can add it in.
So do you have an idea of how to do this? And I say that because between our audio challenges and the amount of time you could spend on. This each individual, um. Do you have any ideas? I'm thinking like, maybe we should try to round robin a little bit and not.
I think you can just throw them out and I'll just, it'll be rapid fire. Oh, mute, unmute, sorry. Um.
I think the round robin.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Good. Sorry, I was missing a technical piece.
Yeah, I just wanna try to give everybody plenty of opportunity, but. You know, I think it's, so, so why don't we do this? Um. Here's a suggestion for how to make this work. Why don't we just go starting with John? And each of us can do two or three suggestions. And then when we get through to TC, maybe we'll start back again and see what, what additional. That way we can kind of move, keep things moving a little bit. So John, why don't you? If you'd like to start and just make a, you know, like I say, two or three, whatever comments.
Um, trying to achieve all of these, um, goals. And we live it. Say something like that.
It's actually, that's a really good comment and actually something we were talking about internally today. We've been going through the Puget Sound Regional Council, um, checklist. And it's a way to look at your existing plan and see where there's gaps between the, the updated PSRC policies. And this was one of the gaps that we identified was a lack of policies and language around partnerships. Um, and I know it's. Something that has been talked about, you know, in our meetings with staff. So I know it's on people's radar, but, um, it's definitely something from a policy standpoint. That we've identified as a gap. So I think this is a good one to mention.
John, you wanna add another one while you're, while you got the mic? Okay. Josh?
So the, the only one that comes to mind, top of mind really quickly would be. On the walkability aspect or options for a walk drive, whichever one we end up putting it under would be to, um. Prioritize currently underserved areas, particularly around schools where we see a lot of pedestrians trying to walk. I'm thinking. Um, you've got. Two twenty eighth or up, up near, um, Sahali. Where there's a lot of housing developments that really have zero safe way for their kids to walk along that road. Um, down where I live near, you've got Beaver Lake Middle School and you've got some aspects that are walkable, but. Others that are simply a trail, um, in the woods, which is fine in the summer, but when it's dark at three thirty or four. Um, there's less feeling of safety for, you know, a lot of these younger kids to walk back there. So prioritizing, um. Prioritaries, prioritizing those areas, I think, um, is the one that quickly comes to mind.
Yeah, great one.
All right, I'm just gonna go out of, not go last myself, so I'll go right now, um. So, actually I kind of take it on to, to John and Josh here, um. I think that the idea of, of having a more thought out plan, set of trails, sidewalks. Like paths, um, sort of the non-motorized interconnection. Uh, in the community, particularly when we have so many sidewalks that dead end, we have. You know, not a good interconnected understanding of our trail system and all the stuff that goes with that, whether that's lighting and signage or whatever it is. That would be one. Um, and then under. Natural environment, uh, I think there's a whole bunch of things that could go here. Uh, and some of these are more specific or less specific that would be expanded, but parks. Uh, the tree canopy and how the urban forest management plan plays into the, the comp plan. Um, habitat restoration and preservation, including the salmon run efforts at some of the creeks. Um, and then kind of a, an intentional focus on community involvement in. Uh, native species, non-native species, you know, that also can cross pollinate with the. Community, um, the tight knit community. Cultural events, that sort of thing, um, because you know, you start to talk about that and there's definitely a connection with some of the local tribes and. Some real good opportunities for cultural aspect of that as well. That was a couple I thought of off the top of my head. Carrie, can you go next?
Yes, uh, I wanted to talk about retail amenities. So, uh, in preparation for this meeting, I re-watched April fifth meeting. With city council and I also watched the planning commission from February third. And I wanted to touch on retail. In the February third meeting. Uh, fellow commissioner said that retail and. Uh, restaurants don't go with mom and pop. And I wanted to talk about that a little bit to better understand what we think people are asking for. Um, the largest store that I've ever heard anyone want here is an ace. And although, although that is kind of a chain, it's not super huge. So I wanted to take a moment to explore what people mean when they say retail amenities. And I wanted to share what places I like to go to in neighboring cities. And they're actually quite small. They are bagel shops, bakeries, bookstores and clothing that are. What I would deem family owned or small, only having their local and maybe have one or two locations. So, I'm not sure why retail. Uh, and restaurants, if that's a request, doesn't match up with mom and pop because to me it's kind of the same thing. Uh, the other thing I wanted to comment about that is. I think we keep, some portion of the community keeps asking for that. Because our town center plan has not been fully built out. In the February third, excuse me, the April fifth meeting. I got the sense from two council members, one former and one present. They said, don't worry, town center is coming. And I think they were trying to say that when people were asking for more diversity and housing and retail, they meant above and beyond. Town center or our current mixed used, uh, centers. And I'm not sure if that's the case. So I think that as we're trying to meet some of these. If, to keep in mind that I think we put them where we've actually intended to put them. And then if they go there, then maybe we will stop asking for them because they will have arrived. So, sorry for this a little clee there, but I did wanna touch on retail and just one person or. You know, I represent someone in the community, obviously, but from what I hear. And so I wanted to make it clear. What we're, what we may be asking for and maybe what we're not.
Mike, go ahead, please.
Okay, um, hey Jeff, could you, um, reduce the size of the mirror board a little bit? Um, I, I have a couple of comments and first off, um, Mark, I thought that your, um. Items around the natural environment were great. I think that often we say we want trees, don't mess with the trees. It's important to recognize parks, some of the wetlands, that the natural environment is much broader than that. And I think about going to like Big Rock Park and it's got like. Great little hiking trails and some, you know, fun activities. There's a little wetland there. Um, and so being able to, uh, enhance the. The natural environment with some things that we put in like parks or educational areas or, you know, preservation of some of the, uh. The history in the area, uh, like we've done around Big Rock. Um, for, um, walkable, drive and so forth. Um, there was just a report I saw like within the past week or two about the. Uh, highway death rates in the US versus Europe. So great. We're not doing such a good job. And so the, the, um, what we could do to achieve would be the design of. You know, called transportation system broadly, not just roads. In a way that, uh, leads to safety, pedestrian safety in particular, but, but not just that, no, you know, car accidents and so forth. Uh, so we should, you know, there are things like the way the crosswalks are marked, that Europeans do it very differently than what we do. And the width of roads and so forth. So, so that would be examples. And then about the character and I bring in some of what was in diversity. I do think that, um, so I don't know if it goes under that one, Jeff, for the first one, but, um. The ability to have, you know, culturally appropriate events that would welcome everybody in the community, not just. You know, particular, you know, faith or, uh, particular group, ways of bringing people together to both celebrate. Uh, you know, their culture and celebrate Samamish and, you know, things like Fourth of July. So, so those are. Ways of helping to bring the community together. Um. So I think what, since we're doing round robin, I'll stop and let, you know, pass over to, uh, the other end of the dice.
TC, uh, how about now? Something you wanna comment on?
Uh, I don't know, I, I have. I, I find myself having, uh. Look, like a flood of kind of mixed emotions on this, trying to figure out. What? What points are, are equitable for? You know, the, the most of the citizenry, right? And how do we? Go off and encapsulate enough individual points to. Meet the needs or appease. Enough of the differing opinions, right? Like we. We've heard in the past that, you know, Samamish would be a better place with a movie theater or a bowling alley or. A bowling alley that has a park built on top of it and grass for a roof and things like that. And, you know, those are, those are cool ideas, but. The, I, I think the reality is what are the things that the community actually needs? That, that's not present, right? I, I mean. When we look at things like transportation, I would love to see some sort of public transportation that. Isn't just on two twenty eighth and Sahali way. Right? Like there, there's one shot. I'd love to see public transportation that is. Available beyond extended business hours, like six in the morning until ten at night. Right? If you actually look at the schedules, right? What happens if you're an off shift worker? You, you can't take public transportation out of here. You know, uh, I, I'd love to see, uh, celebrating, you know, the, the character and the heritage. Of Samamish a little bit more. Um. You know, there's, there's a great plaque that talks about the fact that, uh, I think, was it Clint Eastwood was a, uh. A lifeguard at Beaver Lake at some point. Um, you know, that's kind of like a cool little thing, um, you know, figure out something around that. Um. But beyond that, I, I don't know. Uh, I, I really struggle with this one.
Okay. Thanks TC. John, we'll go back to you. Thanks, John. Josh?
Uh, I've been struggling on how to say this on the housing variety, choice and affordability. Um. With that one, I think you might have visions of. Big square apartment complexes and that would be. Something that you might get pushed back from the community with. So like, especially in the affordability aspect of it. Um, so I think ensuring that we look at it. And make sure that these. This new housing, new smaller housing kind of fits the character of Samamish and. Uh, we might be, it, it might not even be an issue because their new development regulations will have already accomplished that goal, but, um. Might be something to push in, um. To point out in the comp plan. Yeah, that's it for now.
Good one. Okay, a couple for me. Uh, I would, I would echo John's comment about the fact we have no newspaper. We should figure. Out some better way to communicate with the city and that can. Amongst the people within the city in the community and that can fall under. Infrastructure, it can fall under resiliency, it can fall under building, community. I think that's a good one. Another one that could fall on a few different places is, um. We have traditionally been a community of families with young kids. And now we're moving towards a community that has more older generation folks in it. And so whether that means building a senior center or figuring out how to. Integrate more programs into the community that involve. Um, seen, senior citizens or older folk, older folks in the community. I think kind of that word intergenerational is important. Because the, the character of the community is shifting a little bit in the demographics and we need to acknowledge that and figure out how to address it. Uh, I do think that the community in terms of building the community. The community events we have, some of them are very much celebrated. I mean, they can continue support for that, like the celebration on July fourth is a good example of that. Um. I also think that, you know, a lot of this sounds like we're just talking about the city doing more. A lot of people are gonna hear that and raise their eyebrows. Um, I do think sometimes we do a good job and sometimes we could certainly do better on. sometimes we do a good job and sometimes we could certainly do better on coordinating with other community groups like the Chamber of Commerce, like Rotary, like, you know, you can come up with a list of those kind of folks. And some of the, especially on the, the community topic, partnering with some of those folks could actually maybe lessen the load on the city, um, because a lot of those groups would be probably thrilled to take on certain things, not too much, but some things. Um, under housing. So the way I was thinking about it, it is kind of a little bit of what Josh was saying, but we need to figure out how to combine um respect for the history and character of the community. And not, you know, not ignore that while at the same time developing plans that acknowledge the changing and evolving housing needs as the demographics and the nature of how we live changes. So I, to me, yes, we need more diverse housing options and and we need better hor- housing affordability. But the thing that the community wants is to do that, perhaps do that and not trample on the character and the history that's already here. So that might mean things like putting an emphasis on preserving existing housing stock or you know, that sort of thing and preserving existing neighborhoods and protecting that. Um, while at the same time, understanding that there's other things that we need to build now for folks that are getting older and retiring and placing that sort of thing. And then the the other one under that same category is um, I started to see quite a few people putting solar panels on their roof. I think that's gonna become a bigger and bigger issue within the community and it fits in a couple of different categories here. So um providing education and and maybe a little bit of, you know, permitting type support for people that wanna make changes themselves, spend their own money to make changes that fall into the category of sustainability and whether that's, you know, solar panels or or more efficient uh mechanical equipment or whatever. If the city can again find ways to enable that without necessarily spending taxed up, huge amounts of tax dollars to do it, then that's kind of a win-win.
Sure, let's stay on housing. Similar to my earlier comment. Uh, a comment that was made on April fifth was trees, housing diversity and retail are incongruent. And in the same meeting, the same person also said, town center is happening. So you know, that town center does offer an opportunity for some diverse housing. As does the conversations around the other mixed use centers. So, another council member, a former council member in that meeting also said we can still be a bedroom community and have town center. So I think that some of our challenges can be solved if we actually move forward with that plan in some capacity, it's sort of been stalled. And so, um, I, again, I don't think that when folks are asking for diverse housing, they want it on every block in the city or just plop down in a neighborhood. And my neighborhood's fully built out, it has trees and trails. And I don't think that's where anyone's thinking it would go. And it's not a, not my backyard problem, it's you actually have a zone in your city, zone for that appropriate type housing. Um, so that would be my comment to kind of focus on that, like, doesn't seem like we don't have a place for it, it's just, let's put it where we intended to put it. And then I do like the smaller scale housing, I think definitely cottage housing and smaller housing and with the development regs that are coming to, that would be great for maybe elsewhere in the city, for sure. I'd love to see that.
Okay, Mike.
Right, got my process down here for getting connected, took a while. Uh, I'll build on the housing portion, I I love what's been said. Um, I do think to fully meet the diverse needs, given the price of uh real estate and construction in this area that through some partnership or whatever, will need to consider ways of subsidizing, augmenting, making it more affordable for people through some sort of subsidy. Um, so some kind of government support there uh to help with that affordability. Um, and then there was one other, and I don't know where this goes, um, and maybe this is a result or a hope. Um, one of those things that kind of cuts across, I don't, I'm thinking about what we're saying here around safe neighborhoods, the diversity uh in- infrastructure that works, uh being able to walk, the natural environment. And what strikes me is that there's a result that we would love to have, which is a really healthy community, and I mean healthy in the broadest sense, um emotional, behavioral health, physical health. That, you know, you just like, it's, this is a great place to live because you can live, you know, and live, live um a very fruitful life for a long time. And if we play this all out, there'll be less stress and all those kinds of things, so I kind of look at this, if we play, if we, we have a strong vision, these enablers uh that, there's a couple of results and one of them would be this, you know, really healthy, vibrant community. That's it.
Great. TC, you're next, if you have anything you wanna add? I'm seeing. I'm seeing Evan shake his head, no, so I'll go back to you, John. Go ahead, Josh.
I do have one more, um, that's the we have a community, the Y, we have the YMCA, but it serves a specific function, whereas we don't have like a community center where anyone can go and access with some sort of commercial kitchen or anything, so if you wanna have cultural events or anything like that, there's really nothing available, we have the lodge at Beaver Lake, which has a great kitchen, but it's also a small venue. Um, the only other option I know of is churches. And that might be difficult for people to, you know, rent out, so if we want to invite community and community groups to be able to get together, we need to have some sort of community center where they can go, and there's been a lot of talk of a senior center, I don't know if they can be combined and serve multipurpose, but um I think that would solve a lot of challenges for a lot of community groups that want to uh have those sorts of activities.
All right, well, you guys left it to me to talk about the concrete colored elephant in the room, I guess. Um, I think transportation and traffic, you know, has just been an ongoing topic for a decade now. And I obviously can't sit here and say what that might look like, um, but I think we need to take on that at least as part of this vision statement and think about how we speak to that or at least provide a pathway into how it gets dealt with in the comp plan. Um, the one thing I would say is that to me, wherever we talk about the issue of transportation, especially when we get beyond you know, talking about non-motorized and start talking about the real issue of traffic and transportation. Uh, we need to try to figure out how to acknowledge that things are definitely gonna change in a twenty year time horizon. And so our focus should likely be on adapting to those changes. But at the same time, there's also people who say that there'll be a technology that magically solves all our problems, and I don't believe that either. So, so finding a way to uh weave in between changing technology that will probably improve some situations. Um, changing the way people work and live will change some of it. Um, and just the nature of the community and the, you know, the number of people that live here and the types of housing we have will change it as well. So if we could find a way to have a more productive, ongoing conversation in the next two decades about how to best deal with those changes as we move along rather than being always reactive and always combative. Um, to me, that feels like something we could probably not solve a lot of problems upfront, but at least set some expectations in the comp plan by talking about it maybe in the vision statement somehow, so that in the future there's some concept that we're gonna try to figure it out and not just fight about it for the next twenty years.
Yeah, great.
Okay, let's keep going, Carrie.
Yeah, just one quick thing, I like, I had just taken a stab at upleveling that first vision statement to something like Sammish is a model city of sustainability, connectedness, connectedness and livability. As sort of, you know, as you're reading sustainability, it could be economic, climate or infrastructure. Connectedness could encompass transportation, but also walkability and livability could encompass housing, schools and whatnot, and so uh I would love to just, if we're, I know we're uh zooming out from the actual draft statement, but that was something I was, I thought would be nice to see at the top and then, and then have those sub bullets, whatever, whether they stay the same or whether they change in the future.
Yeah, that sounds very nice.
Sammish is a model city of sustainability, connecting, content, connectedness and livability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
All right, well, I um, I have one or two quick things, one is about the transportation. Um, a lot of the transporta- some of the transportation issues are not Sammish there on two O two and and other of the major arterials. So that speaks of partnering with other parts of the region uh to, you know, make sure some of those issues get solved, we advocate for easier access off of the plateau and Redmond's such a mess, it's unbelievable. Um, and uh the only other one, since Carrie, since you mentioned that statement, I love the livability and some of those words that you used, so I would, I would echo that. I also played with uh like that overarching statement and I go back and I, I hope you don't mind, Jeff. Um, but since there was the draft vision statement and so forth, couldn't help ourselves, I guess. Um, I thought that the one that was written there was good, it was matter of fact, it wasn't engaging, it wasn't like, you know, oh wow, this is a place I wanna be. So something that we could do for that, my, my attempt, which is rough and drafty and and maybe not as good as Carrie's was, Sammish is a welcoming, safe and thriving community with a strong identity built around its diverse cultures, civic engagement, effective infrastructure and bountiful green spaces. So we're trying to get around, you you know, something like that, and obviously it needs a lot more work, but.
You know, those are both, I think, concise and convey the, the major themes without getting too long-winded, and I think there's other ways to articulate some of the more specifics that maybe aren't in that core vision statement, right? So that can be, you know, there can be other pieces that communicate the vision, but that, you know, it's concise and uh and certainly more powerful than multiple paragraphs, I think. In my opinion, so I appreciate, I appreciate the effort on that.
Should you do it one more time? Just to make sure I capture it. You went faster than I could go.
Process, yeah. I I actually I could add this to you afterwards, if you like, let's do that.
Email to us, too.
Okay, um, I think we're starting to kind of run out, I'll just see, does anybody else? Take a look at me, raise your hand, other things you wanna? TC, any, anything else? Says no, um, the, the one or, since we kind of have moved into more of a the wishlist stuff, I'll just mention one that has always been on my wishlist and it won't go anywhere, but at least I can get you to write it down maybe, or imagine writing it down. Many people, particularly my family, who visit this community um, look around at all the trees and all the power lines overhead and they go, what is the matter with you people? And so one of my, one of my imaginings for the city would be to figure out how to, you know, uh undo the, the, what I think was poor decision of when we built two twenty eighth, not working harder to get power lines underground and some of the other key feeds in the community, so the power doesn't go out every time the wind blows over five miles an hour. So if we can find a way to tamp that down into less of a direct comment, that could go into resiliency for sure. And the truth is actually, uh, that's tongue in cheek, obviously, but I do think that the idea that the community can be more resilient in a way that we can be more independent of those around us. In the case of an emergency and whether that's, you know, seismic upgrades, supporting the community with seismic upgrade programs or making our power lines less vulnerable, the trees or making sure that we work with the water and sewer districts so that their infrastructure is is organized and backed up in a way that when we lose power from the grid, we can keep going. Um, those are things I'm passionate about, how they really fit into this kind of a plan, I'm not sure, but uh, I think there are certainly people who feel like we would like to be more independent and that would be one way to feel more independent.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great comment, I, I'm also intrigued just by the way that you brought it up by mentioning someone visiting from out of town, because I've always found it's really helpful and insightful to kind of see how visitors, you know, see your community, because you know, you're sort of in it every day and sometimes they have things that, you know, you may not have thought of or um, so, you know, if you have family visiting over the holidays and they have thoughts, make sure they capture it down or pull up the mural board with them and and have a go at it. All right, thank you. Um, we can go back again, we can share this out, so it's not, not by any means, uh, the last shot at this, but I, I do wanna go on to the next one, which I think is gonna be pretty interesting. And so this is really about how we make it happen, right? There are fiscal constraints, there's resource constraints, um, there are just, you know, challenging issues that we have to sort out and come up with strategies, which we will through the plan, but you know, what are some of the ideas for how we might make some of, some of these things happen, whether it's fiscally, whether it's from a process or, you know, standpoint, um you know, what, whatever you may think would help, but you know, as we're going through the existing comp plan, I mean, there's lots of great policy language, there's lots of language around a lot of the community priorities that we just discussed, and and yet some of them are really just hard to achieve, right? Um, things like housing, you know, how do you introduce, you know, new housing variety in a fairly built out community, you know, with with uh, you know, the cost of construction and things like that, um, how do you deal with the transportation challenges? Um, you know, what, what thoughts might you have in terms of, I mean, and you've mentioned some already, I think that we could build from like regional partnerships and things like that, but just wanted to open up and talk through some potential strategies or thoughts about how we make, make some of this happen.
Anyone feel brave, oh Carrie, good, Carrie's gonna go first, good job.
One, one thing that keeps coming up in different discussions is measuring ourselves and so a dashboard uh on any particular topic that we're trying to make happen, whether that's you know, climate or or transportation or health or whatever, just measuring it and letting the community kind of work together to see each others. E- either at a city, like it could be the, the city measures itself and how we're doing against the city and others could be fun. And then, um, in all the public engagements, we're always saying like, it's hard to reach out to HOAs, uh, they never respond, but a lot of people, like, they're like their own little cities and they, they're working through a lot of things, and so it would just be like, really leveraging their community, the community that they have. And sort of, just having a better engagement there, because we do have so many and they're kind of robust. And so they might be able to you know, help represent and help distribute information better, so instead of just like, we can't find them, like find a few and really kind of dig in and make it happen and build a relationship and then maybe others will, will come.
Yeah, that's a good one, and I, we do have lists of some of the HOAs we're gonna be maybe we've even started reaching out to, so. And I love the measuring ourselves, one, that's something that we've started to put in some of our recent plans, not comp plans yet, but um, you know, how do you know if you're successful, right? You know, maybe there's a a check in every couple of years or a report or simple metrics that we could look at that would start to indicate, you know, how we're doing in terms of achieving our goals and our vision. I really like that.
One quick more, um, kind of along with the solar panels or, or being more resilient. Um, I recently participated in like a rain wise M and R regarding rain barrels and, and, and collection and flow. Uh, but it, it was, and they had like, um, not discounts, but, um, credits. I'm, I don't know what the word is, but it was for Seattle, not Sammamish. And so, you know, we care about stormwater and rain and all that. So um, although that costs money, but finding a way to help subsidize or encourage people to do it. I mean, that's one area that's really sparked my interest. I'm currently designing a system. I had, I had one of the contractors come out and it's just been real fun to figure out, you know, the city is so passionate about stormwater. How is, how can I at my house solve some problems I still have, but just be part of the solution. And it's been fun. So.
Yeah, that is another good one. We use some inspiration from the rain wise program for some of the recent code updates that we worked on for the city. Um, so it's a great program and can be really impactful and you know, doesn't require a lot of city direct resources, but just that sort of outreach and communication.
Let's start with John down there.
The city, obviously. Needs avoiding overlapping jurisdictions. Things more complicated. So incorporating the strong, the slow trailer. Transportation. Infrastructure. Is probably from super city, from community sponsorship. And looking at a culture and a program. And incentive programs. Now, please, I remember knowing it's been a lot of local and community visits. One by hundred and twenty. There were, when looking at W's, they were in the program, they actually looked into all the areas in the city. And provides grants to these specific projects. Not that the city's necessarily gonna do all the projects, but Jake started. Some of these things, yeah. On figuring members.
Yep.
Through our partnerships and relationships with PSE. That I am told is that's leverage. Pushing in the direction. Look forward to the conflict. Division, we can face risks. So some sort of general. On the facility. Neighbor of state partners.
Yep, those are good ones. I think there's a lot of strategies like LEDs that, you know, and, and many others that, you know, we could certainly explore as part of the implementation piece.
Go ahead, Josh.
Um, so I often get caught up on, um, if everything is important, then nothing is, or if everything is urgent, then nothing is. And that's often what putting something like this together feels like. And I use a lot of my personal life. I had to look up what it's called, the urgent important matrix, the Eisenhower matrix. It's not directly applicable to this. But going through that exercise for each one of these items, I think is going to be critical because we only have so much money. We only have so much time and we only have so much staff capacity. We can't focus on everything.
Right.
So how do we make some of these big ideas happen is we have to prioritize them. And we have to go through some real process to get there. I don't know what that process looks like. The one I just mentioned isn't perfect for this, but we need to do something like this, or at the end of this whole cycle, will we really have accomplished that much?
Yeah, I think, I mean, not to cut you off, sorry.
No, you're good.
I just wanted to say that I think that's just a really good point. I wanted to talk about for a few moments because you know, taking on a comprehensive plan update like this for a growing fairly new city is kind of daunting, right? It's like you have so many potential things that you need to do and, and different competing interests and desires within the community. So I would guess I would challenge the commissioners and ourselves to find out or determine through this process, what is sort of the most important and, and what you want to put your efforts and research sources towards you and which is sort of, you know, I don't want to say not important, but you know, less of a priority. And so even though we're going to talk about a zillion different things, because this kind of encompasses the entire city, like to really just focus on what are those, what are kind of those key things? As if it's transportation and housing. You know, um, maybe those are, are key focuses. Um, if it's other things, you know, that's fine too, but I think it is important to come out of the comp plan with some really clear priorities. Otherwise things just get lost and pages and pages of policies that are all great, but I think don't provide the strategic direction to get where you want to be. So I think that's just a really, really good, good point and something to be mindful of, um, as we go through the process of, you know, what, what do we really want to focus on?
I just want to put a fine point on not just that we need to prioritize, but we should probably have a real procedure in place for understanding how we're prioritizing.
Yeah.
Cause that I think will be important to make sure we come up with the right.
Yeah, I mean, yep, I think, and I'll, I'll, I'll give that certainly some thought. I don't have a complete answer, but I, I do think as we get you know, further along and we start developing the plan and have a draft plan. You know, having a process both with the commission and the council and the public to be able to do that, I think is really important. Um, so we'll give that some thought.
Mike, did, do you have a chance? Good.
All right. Uh, yeah, a few things. Um, first off, Josh, I think that's super important and especially that process in making that visible. To help enable that, I think really strong communications. And not just during this whole visioning and planning, comprehensive planning process, but as we continue on so that the public is well informed and therefore more likely to support the decisions that are being made. So one of the bullets in here should be about that kind of ongoing education, communication with the community. I think, um, we've already mentioned a little bit about partnerships and that definitely should be here so we can get more done than we could just as a city. And then the last one that I would add, and I don't know the, the best way to say this, but I'd, I'd call it like effective or efficient government. And that includes less bureaucracy, less difficulty getting things approved. Less we're doing this and now we're doing that. All of those things add a lot of cost, take a lot of time. And, you know, inhibit being able to achieve the vision. And, and some of those things occur because the community is not like sufficiently behind the direction that's set. So that's why I mentioned about the communications. Uh, so, and one last, I guess, one last thing is I've thought about the things that we've said. Um, most of these aren't just kind of business as usual. I think these are ideas that can help us move ahead as opposed to, well, let's just make sure we've updated our code.
Right.
You know, those sorts of things. So, which of course will be necessary, but not sufficient. It's my comments.
Yep. Another, another good one. I think the other thing to think about is not to think of this as we're doing a plan and then we're done, but really it's a comprehensive planning program. That's really starts now and goes for 20 years, you know, and then that way it takes on a little bit of a different meaning. So th- those comments really resonate with me as well.
TC, um, give you the chance to jump in here. I will mention my iPad's down fifteen percent, so. We're okay for the moment. Um, a couple of things, one I want to pile on, well, what was said here a little bit. I also have always been kind of a believer that we get trapped into just categorizing every idea as good or bad. Um, and we really shouldn't do that. Most of the ideas are good ideas. It's really a question, not of what we think is a bad idea, but of all the list of good ideas, what's the difference between what we could do and what we should do? And one of the ways that, you know, can be very helpful for folks like us as commissioners and, and other participants in this process is to early on have some way of evaluating. You know, there can be an idea that is a great idea and have a huge impact, but it's a very heavy lift. And if we don't define that, we have to make the choice between that great big idea and twelve small ideas that really accomplish a lot, but are just not flashy or, you know, or narrower in their scope. Help, helping people to recognize those trade offs through the course of the process would be really helpful. And we can be wrong sometimes too, right? I know there's a hesitation occasionally to even talk about it. Is it one dollar sign or five dollar signs? Well, we don't know. Well, let's, then let's guess, right? Because at least then we can have a productive conversation about what we're choosing, what we're trading. It's not that the ideas are bad. It's that we have to make a choice. So just echoing really kind of what Josh and Mike both said. A couple of other things, just as comments to this, I think one of the things I often consider is that right now I feel like we're kind of leaking a lot of, um, people out of the community when seniors want to retire here and they can't, and they're just all of that energy that many of them have, all the volunteering that they want to do when they retire is just disappearing. We have a very economically monolithic kind of community sometimes because the majority of people are in a certain middle age range. They're working at a job that takes a lot of their time. There's a culture of, I'm too busy to do anything. And so when you want to have volunteers, it's often hard to get people to volunteer. If we increase that economic diversity of a people in the community and in particular can figure out a way to retain more of the seniors or people that are, you know, newly retired. Those people are, could be a tremendous resource to the city for all kinds of maybe not big giant things like putting power lines underground, but, but a bunch of the other things, I think that they could contribute in a significant way, but not if they're not here.
Right.
Um, so a, and it's really kind of the same thing, even in at the other end of the spectrum with younger folks too, who maybe are looking for a way to connect with others. And my, and volunteering often could be an avenue for that. But if they can't afford to live here, they're not here either. So who's here? It's the people who are not going to contribute to a lot of those things. So if we can find a way to increase our diversity of housing, our opportunities for different types of, uh, economically different types of people to stay in the community. Um, then the idea of having more joint ventures with volunteer groups, more commission type activities, that sort of thing. We may be able to accomplish more than we think with less without, you know, having to rely on the financial resources every single time of the community. Some of that's aspirational, but I also think that we're kind of going in the other direction at the moment.
Yeah, no, it's a really important thing that I don't know is a lot of people would point to in this type of exercise, but it, it's so right on. And, and I've worked for other communities that really have had a strong, you know, senior population and people that have been in the community long term and were just extremely active in the community and partnering with the city and doing all sorts of stuff through community organizations and on their own and, and taking, you know, the burden off of the city to, to have to do those things and be able to focus on the things that, that they, you know, what they do best. So I think it's, it's really, really important. And I've also noticed in many other communities we're working with, they're having the same issue, you know, going to a community event and meeting multiple people that used to live in said community and they didn't have the type of housing that they were needing and had to move somewhere else and were frankly, not super excited about that, but you know, it's, it's, it's unfortunately becoming more and more common. I know it's, it's, it's an issue here as well. So appreciate that.
Okay. Anybody else on this? John, go ahead.
This is one of the most happy.
Yep.
The creating predictability. The bike was talking a little bit about. Since then. Whether it's our business community or not, the volunteer group or whatever. Some of the kind of add to their hats. Creating predictable steps. You're gonna have, have some bureaucracy there, but they know how to even go or nothing. To.
Yep.
It's been hard. The transportation. Moves are changing. In the beginning. Examples are ending the one that you met. Like a people like losing the time for our business.
Yeah, absolutely.
I want to just, uh, give TC one more opportunity here, just in case before we move on.
No, nothing for me.
Jeff, we can move on.
Yeah. So that, I mean, that is essentially the end of the exercises that we had, uh, for this evening and we've collected. Um, I mean, this went as good as I could have hoped. Um, lots of great input there. Um, we can work on kind of cleaning this up. And we're happy to share it out. If, if you want to, you know, go in and, and make additional comments, we could certainly do that. Or if you have other thoughts afterwards, you want to email them to us, uh, but we can put together a summary that we can share with you. Uh, we're going to be doing, we, we've done the same thing with the staff group like two weeks ago. Yeah. So we met with a core group of the staff and went through this exercise. And then we're going to do the same thing next week with the city council. And then we're going to take all of the input and I guess all the past work and, uh, start to develop a framework for an updated vision statement. And then, uh, first part of next year, we'll be back to review it with you all and get feedback. Um, as well as with the planning commission, uh, with the city council. And then we're planning to have a final scoping resolution, which will identify kind of the major topics and elements for the update. Um, and the vision statement, uh, in the resolution to be adopted by the council and, and you guys will all get to see that before it happens. So this was really just kind of a brainstorming input session and just really appreciate the, um, solid input and thinking and just, uh, thanks a lot.
Did you have a comment, Josh?
Question to clarify, maybe I missed it. As you just said it, are we passing a resolution recommending a vision statement to the council or is one being just handed to them? How's that working?
Um, I don't know. Is you'll actually recommend the, uh, resolution. I'm not sure, but certainly you would have a recommendation on the vision statement that would come out of our meeting. So it could just be a standard, you know, vote kind of thing. But yeah, you will, you will definitely be making a recommendation on the vision statement. Yeah.
Okay. So just to clarify, not a resolution, but the, our, this body will be making a motion for a recommendation. So there's an official package that gets sent to them.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Exactly.
Go ahead, Kerry.
And to that point, in addition to a statement, will it possibly include some of the other elements that you've shown us before, like the, the top 10?
Yeah.
And maybe a map.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm sensing that the commission would like something short and punchy in terms of the actual statement. Uh, but I think there's other things that we can add some of the more specifics to achieve that, that are sort of part of it, but not part of the core vision statement. I think there's also opportunity to integrate some graphic elements. And I think we want it to be like a page of the plan. So, um, so yes, there is opportunity to, to integrate those other elements that we showed as examples. Sure.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you, Jeff. Um, you know, one idea I'll pass, I'll just mention that was thrown out there at one point is and you guys kind of actually did it already, but in some ways I think it's a valuable exercise to try to write your own version of the vision statement. And I'd encourage everybody on the commission to, you know, take 15 or 20 minutes or whatever it takes and and take a shot at that. And you know, like you say, um, Kerry and Mike kind of already did that, but maybe write down what you think it might look like and send it to Evan. And, um, you know, that might, I think that there's two things that are valuable there. One is it, it forces you to think through it a little bit when you have to write it. And it also probably provides some good uh, im- image or concept of what we think a vision statement might look like. When you have to actually write it down. So optional homework, if you should choose to do so.
Yeah, great. Thanks.
Okay. Evan, can we move on to the next thing on our agenda?
Yep, awesome to move on.
Okay. Next is agenda related public comment. So let's go ahead and do public comment on this particular topic.
Great. Thank you. I will ask for folks listening who would like to provide public comment to please raise your hand and we will promote you. Uh, given the audio issues tonight, that uh, once the first commenter is done and the second commenter, you've been promoted, just go ahead and feel free to start. That way we don't have to unmute and mute everyone. Uh, we'll go ahead and promote Ms. Victor. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Victor. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Victor.
Hi, this is Mary Victor of Sammamish for 22 years. Um, really great in, input by everyone, interaction, terrific ideas and well stated. Um, I think just, uh, when Carrie Boswick had spoken and then Mike spoke after, I think a combination of their two statements actually would be really good. I would not use the word model. Sammamish actually is a city. It's not just a model. Um, and then try to state everything as actively as you can, like, um, connected and, um, other things instead of, um, uh, using ing or iv, ive endings. Um, I did like what Mark Baughman said about if everybody tries to write their own and send it in. Um, that way you each have to choose the words and elements that you find most important. You order them and it kind of puts them into a priority. And then, um, I think one of the ways to simplify things is to use a simple Venn diagram, like there are things the seniors need, there are things the community needs, and there are things that teens need. Um, so for example, uh, I was in Isiqua, uh, to do some errands, uh, this week and I went to a bakery, found a new Peruvian chocolate place that I didn't know existed. I love going to those places similar to what Commissioner, but, or board, um, Commissioner Boswick had said. I also went by the food bank and there's a community center in Isiqua, which I've never been to and it's open. And I don't know if the teen cafe has been open since COVID, but it's called the garage, a teen cafe. This is a safe space for all teens to go and come as you are. We want you here. Find us online and then they have it. And then it's mostly hours from three to seven during the weekday and closed on the weekends. Um, I would love to see a performing arts center in the city so we could host things and have events and entertainment that are inside and not just outside and hoping for good weather. Um, I think we should have arts incorporated as an addition to the history. Um, there are good history around and, um, there's actually a piece written by Phil Doherty from, I believe is with the Heritage Society. And it, it's about two or three pages. Um, it's a King County link. I'll send it online. It was actually, they had put money forth and that was one of the reasons the essay was written. But it goes all the way back to the beginning where Mr. Monahan was the first non-native American person who settled in 1877 and then talks about the chicken farms and that we took all the trees away, um, and that they were gone. And it doesn't have it in there, but Sammamish has actually been detreed twice, um, when there was the Seattle fire and then when there was the San Francisco fire. Um, a couple of things I can think of for different housing types, uh, one of my sons lives in Duval and so I visit there periodically to see him and along Big Rock Road there, they have some very nice housing. It's duplexes that look just like a big single family home. They have some quads that are spaced in turn. They've got different garages, garages on the front, garages hidden behind, garages in a row, garages hidden the next level down on topography. I believe it's a Toll Brothers, uh, development there, but they have a bunch of things going on in Duval. I've also seen nice housing that I like in Woodenville, um, up in Totem Lake. Um, and just some of the places that we drive around. There are some Kirkland bungalows, which are 1,500 square foot homes, two story with a single car garage where you can queue up two cars. I think it's like 16 homes on like less than two acres and it's two acres minus roads, minus stormwater. The stormwater is a green thing that you can see. There's a gazebo there where you wait by the bus stop. Um, there's also, uh, cottages, I believe it's along 132nd up from the bungalows, but it's, I think it's Redmond because it's on this side of the road versus Kirkland. And in reading about that and researching years ago, uh, Redmond did work with, um, some sort of agents that gave them subsidies. There were a lot of cottage homes that were built and some of them are expensive and some of them are very inexpensive and they're kind of clustered around each other in a central thing. And then there's like a little pavilion and then there's a plaything back by where the trails go to and their garages are clustered together and they look like little barns. And everybody kind of has a garden and they even named their house like they and like some of them are Spanish names and some are other things, but it's just, there's a lot of different communities that can be built. And so I think one of the things that people can do is if there are certain, I think, uh, the consultant tried to do it with some of the other cities that he looked at a little bit. But if people have just like even one little cool thing from a city or something that you've seen, I think that would be very important. And then I said, again, using the Venn diagram, like maybe there is a place that the teens, the seniors, the community and, you know, um, performing exhibition hall can all be put together in the city. Um, because land is, is very expensive and, um, hard to do. Um, so I didn't really have a lot more to say. I think we have so many ideas and I think, I think organizing them, putting them down. And since a vision is sort of a shorter statement, I think if we can get to one statement with maybe some of the big idea lists, which are the things to focus and work on, kind of like air heights, airway heights from the consultant, that was probably the format that most appealed to me and what I've seen. So thanks for listening to me. I'll cut it short tonight and yield my time to Mr. Stick Near and one else. Thank you. And I will try to send, uh, that link for that article from the city. From that was done by King County by Phil.
Hi there, it's Planning Commissioners. Fantastic meeting, all of you. I say that sincerely. Everybody just contributed just awesome. I agree with the consultant far more than what was expected. It was, you know, I go back a few years, if Jane Garrison were on the commission today, she'd be inspired. And she had a very strong personality. For those of you who, who knew Jane, she would have been excited about what happened here today. Carrie's comments, Bosworth's comments on sustainability, a motto, revenue. You know, prioritizing Mark Baughman, peace and quiet, Mike Bresko, not just a plan, do, uh, TC Labby, you know, what does a community really need that is not present? All really good stuff. And, and before I go into a potential solution and some specifics that you haven't heard, uh, you know, before, uh, I suggest all of you consider going back to look at three planning commission meetings in 2018. There was a housing industry panel that came on June 7th of 2018 with some sage advice. There were two meetings in July of 2018 on the housing strategy plan. I think you should take a look at that plan, look at what was said and look at what the planning commission, you know, discussions were on those two meetings on July 5th and, and on the 19th. I think it would help a lot. Um, Carrie Bosworth mentioned the theme of sustainability. What went off in my head when she said that, and this ties into what Mark Baughman talked about would be stayability. Do we really have stayability options as unplanned and planned changes happen in people life? When you look over, now I'm doing a, a round robin too. This is sort of just tossing one thing after the other. When you look at what Sammamish has focused on mostly over 20 years. And I'm not saying this is wrong. I'm saying it is. Sammamish has done far more work on the natural built environment. In general, I'm not saying they couldn't be improved, but in general, our cumulative holistic approach to environmental regulation is far superior to any city that I'm aware of. We've also put a lot of effort into the public built environment, our city hall, our park systems going up from 40 to 600 acres, open space. Uh, and that's owned, that's, and, and, um, th- there's been a lot of, you know, the, the why, although some don't like that, the, the city library, Mars Hill, the Boys and Girls Club, the MOU, et cetera. There's been a lot of work into publicly owned in, environment. But what's got the least amount of work is the private built environment. Housing, I can't, uh, you know, repeat Mark's word because I forgot what it was, but we're sort of monolithic. And that came from inheriting most of our housing stock, 85%. But we haven't worked on really knowing what our community needs. For those of you who have read the town center plan, this, this may be front and center, but for those of you that have not, the town center plan numbers were based on a significant portion of our growth target. They weren't based on what our economic and demographic needs over a cycle of life. That's what I think we have to do to fix HST. And HST is housing that leads into services that leads into transportation. We need to, to decide, do we want to meet a reasonable portion, not all, but some optimize economic and demographic needs for planned and unplanned changes over cycle of life or not. If we do, that'll change some housing supplies. Some types may go down a bit, although they already have over the last couple of years with, uh, development regs phase into some types with increase. Then we tie our services to those you know, directions, then we tie our transportation to those two combined. So optimizing the, the private built environment is key. And I talked about this with city council. But, you know, I used to only talk about economic and, you know, demographic needs and wants over time. I've changed that now to B C E D. And the B is for, you know, belonging. The consultant talked about that, allowing a community that allows those in our community to stay. The C is actually three of B C E D. The C is a conservation, climate change and character, all of it. And then economic and, and demographic needs over time. Those factors should go into evaluating what's the right mix of housing that can be net positive for our community, where the advantages across the board holistically to every aspect of the city are far greater than the, you know, disadvantages. I want to close with an invitation because I won't have time to go into it and I'm not going to take all my time. But for those that have played, um, poker card games, and I'm not a big fan of card games, but there's a card game called seven card stud and you really don't know what you got in, until you get all the cards. I want to, I want to talk to you about a 12 card stud, the card game and show you the cards of optimizing the private built environment and how that whole hand reads and plays out. I'll read out to each of you to talk about it, solves finance, gets traffic to go down, decreases students, increases revenue, far less stormwater. It's across the board, exciting. I'll share it with you and get your input and thoughts. So anyway, appreciate the chance to talk. And I'll send an email and we'll see if we can meet for coffee sometime and shoot the breeze of a 12 card stud for optimizing the private built environment and see if you think the hand has merit. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Have a good evening.
Okay, um, I want to mention, uh, take a look at the calendar and remind everyone that because we moved this meeting to this week, that we meet again next week. Same bad time, same bad channel. So, um, just remind everybody not to get in your habit of waiting two weeks before we come back together. We'll be here next Thursday. Evan, anything else from staff?
Nothing else from staff. Hopefully we have, uh, smoother audio performance next week. I thank everyone for their patience tonight, but, uh, yep, nothing else from staff.
Great. I want to make one quick comment about all of this, uh, that I forgot earlier is I think that sometimes when we have this discussion, we tend to focus on all the things we need to fix about Sammamish. Um, I would encourage that we start these meetings with uh, something like, which I'm, I'm going to say that I still believe Sammamish is one of the best places in the country to live and we all, I think probably would, for the most part, say that. It's a great community with a lot going forward and all we're trying to do is build on that. So let's not get, let ourselves or anybody else um, that sits up here, get trapped into the idea that we're trying to fix something bad. We should celebrate what's good and build on top of that. Okay. That was a little privilege on my part to get to say something. So, uh, if there's nothing else, would someone move to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Right.
Pause, no. Thanks, everybody. See you again next week at this time.